Good morning, this is councillor Barra checking in. Hi councillor Keenan, it's Tammy from the clerk's office. Can you unmute your mic and test your audio for us please?
Good morning.
Good morning, you're coming through clear. Councillor Barra, I see you're online. Can you unmute your mic and test your audio for us please?
Good morning.
You're coming through clear, thank you. Good morning councillor Plushy, can you unmute your mic and test your audio for us please?
Morning.
Good morning, you're coming through clear. Hi Ian Jones, this is Tammy from the clerk's office. Can I have you unmute your mic and test your audio for us please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you so much. Once your item is called, I'll pull you back into the meeting. I'm gonna put you in as an attendee. Thank you.
In today's meeting, we'd like to acknowledge that we are gathering here today on the Treaty Territory, the Mississauga's and the Credit First Nation. Before then, the traditional territory, the Haudasni here on Owendap. We also acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis and any one of other global Indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. We are honoured to live, work and enjoy this land. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem to be followed by a moment of personal reflection.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on God for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on God for thee.
Thank you. Welcome to our regular council meeting of June 26, 2024. In the chambers, we have councillor Maderos, Fertini, Tor, deputy mayor Singh, councillor Santos, councillor Visante and online to the clerk we have... Councillor Barra is online.
And I see councillor Plushy online and councillor Keenan.
Okay, so we have all members of council in attendance. Before we go to the approval of the agendas, I want to acknowledge we have a lot of summer students here today. And this is a program the city believes in and set up a number of years ago to make sure that young people have an opportunity to grow, to learn during their summer break. And welcome to our city of Brampton family and hope you find today's council meeting educational. Maybe if every student, to give you a size of having people here, every student could raise their hand? Okay. Okay, well we'll try to make it an entertaining council meeting for you. And welcome to City Hall. We're now at item two, approval of the agenda, and the clerk has a number of updates.
Through you mayor, we've had two revised agendas posted, one on Monday. And the second revised agenda was published yesterday at approximately 4:45. The following items were included in the revised agendas. 4.1, the council minutes from the city council meeting of June 12th, the minutes were published. 6.1, proclamations, Bill Davis' day proclamation has been moved, is to be moved to the July 10th meeting. And B, the second proclamation, Caribbean Music Week. We've added a note that a song is to be played on Steel Pan by Suzette Vidal. 7.2, delegations, food trucks affecting businesses in the downtown, the delegations have been published. 7.3, delegation regarding Habitat for Humanity, the delegation was added and the presentation published. 8.1, staff update regarding government relation matters, the presentation was published. 8.2, proposed motion to address funding shortfalls in municipal and social services in Brampton has been added and published. 8.3, proposed motion regarding the consideration for establishing a municipal services corporation to support regional transition of services and key strategic investments has been added and published. 10.4.1, a staff report regarding Habitat for Humanity contribution agreement, the report is published. 12.3, summary of recommendations from the Planning and Development Committee have been published. 12.4, minutes of committee of council from June 19th has been published. 14.1, correspondence from Honorable Paul Calandra, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, has been added and published. And bylaws, 18.9 through to and including 19.14, sorry, 18.14 have been published.
Thank you to the clerk for that summary. Are there any other items members wish to raise at this point? I see deputy mayor Singh.
I just have an announcement to add and I see it was emailed to the city clerk's office as well, not that long ago though. But it's about Credit Valley Conservation Awards.
So this would be a new item, 6.2, 6.6? Councillor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr Mayor, just adding a discussion item with a corresponding motion regarding an update to the political support model.
What section will that be under, to the clerk?
16.2, I believe, without suit counsel?
Under other business?
Okay, great. We have a motion moved by councillor Fertini and seconded by councillor Power to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, motion carries. We are now at item three, declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note. We're now ready to move to the next item of business on today's council agenda, item four, minutes. We have the following council minutes before us today, minutes city council, June 12th, 2024. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by councillor Maderos, seconded by councillor Tor to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to the consent motion. Council's part of a consent motion process, I'll read each agenda item that is subject to consent motion and any member may verbally identify the item to be held for debate during the meeting. Any item not held for debate will be considered as part of the consent motion voted on for approval. 10.4.1 is being held for a delegation, so we'll have to hold that. 10.4.2, staff report, citywide hackathon. 10.4.3 is a verbal report from the Commissioner of Planning and Building Growth Management, Royal Link Circle, so we'll hold that for the report. 10.5.1, staff report, advance Brampton Fund 2025 framework update. I believe councillor Keenan had requested that to be held, so we'll hold that for him. 10.5.2, staff report to request reinstate funding for the Brampton Excelsors Lacrosse Club. We have a motion to coincide with that, that councillor Keenan asked to hold, and I believe councillor Maderos wants to speak to that as well. 12.1, minutes committee of council, June 5th, 2024. 12.2 minutes audit committee. 12.3, for 12.3?
Yep.
Okay. 12.4, committee of council, June 19th. Staff report, application to amend the official plan and zoning bylaw, Glen Schnarr and Associates, 8654 Mississauga Road. 13.2, discussion item at the request of councillor Keenan, status update downtown Brampton business improvement area. 14.1, correspondence, Honorable Paul Calandra. 16.1, referred matters list. 19.1, closed session minutes, city council, June 12th. 19.2, closed session minutes, committee of council. 19.3, report integrity commissioner update, open session resolution required. 19.4, verbal update potential property acquisition related legal advice. We have to go into close for this one. 19.5, verbal update mobile licensing bylaw, BIA. Okay. The clerk will summarize items to be included on the consent motion for approval.
Through Mayor Brown, the items to be included are 10.4.2, staff report regarding citywide hackathon. 12.2... Yes, things that will be included. Okay, and 12.1, minutes of committee of council from June 5th. 12.3, summary of recommendations for Planning and Development Committee, June...
No, no, I held 12.2.
Oh, sorry. Did you hold 12.2?
No, we held 12.3, not 12.2.
Okay, so 12.2 is included in the consent motion, minutes from the audit committee, June 10th. 12.4, minutes of committee of council, June 19th. 13.1, staff report regarding application to amend the official plan and the zoning bylaw. 14.1, correspondence from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. 16.1, referred matters. 19.1, closed session minutes of June 12th council meeting. 19.2, closed session minutes of committee of council. And 19.3, report regarding integrity commissioner update.
I have a motion moved by councillor Santos, seconded by deputy mayor Singh to approve the consent motion. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to proclamations, which we presented to the organization today. The first proclamation is for Caribbean Music Week. Black music month has been celebrated in Canada during the month of June for over 25 years. This month celebrates the history of those who have built the diverse music scene in all genres and have brought positive attention to our country. Black music month in Canada has a unique week of celebration beginning on June 30th until July 6th, which is dedicated to Caribbean Canadian musicians who have built a strong foundation in the music industry in Canada and are telling the stories of the Black Canadian Caribbean experience through music. This week is called Caribbean Music Week. There are many events and special ceremonies, including the Black Music Month Canada Second Annual Caribbean Music Awards that will pay tribute to the professionals in the music business and have blazed trails and had a tremendous impact on the industry locally and internationally. Caribbean Music Week is now being introduced to cities worldwide as Caribbean artists are now getting appreciation and support they deserve to continue spreading the rich culture of the Caribbean world. And here, of course, the city of Brampton, we celebrate that week with pride and enthusiasm. And I'm told today, rather than simply presenting the proclamation, which we will, we're gonna have a song to be played on Steel Pan by Suzette Vidal, and the floor is yours to do so.
Thank you very much, thank you very much to all. Are you all ready?
Yes.
I'm so glad you're all here today, this is gonna make me really, really excited. So as Suzette Vidal prepares to still play, we do understand that this is a great time of celebrations for the wonderful city of Brampton as we are a year-long celebration of 50 years, right? And so how do you celebrate a birthday? Because I know your big birthday bash is coming up in a couple of days, so how do you celebrate someone's birthday? With a song, what kind of song do you sing to celebrate someone's birthday? Happy birthday, that's right everyone! So as a very special gift to the wonderful city of Brampton, I'd like to introduce to you the illustrious, sensational Steel Pan soloist Suzette Vidal, who's going to play. So precise, happy birthday, but I need everyone singing with me, y'all, enjoying me?
Thank you.
That was wonderful, so I'm gonna ask members of council to join me as we present this Caribbean Music Week proclamation to you.
I think we have a video to play from comms.
I've seen it. It's a good video.
The only thing I would say ahead of the video.
Collision is in Brampton today. This is the biggest tech conference in the world. It's taken place in Toronto over the last few years, but this year we've added the first day to be in Brampton. These are emerging tech companies, the jobs of tomorrow, and we have two hundred tech companies in Brampton today to share ideas, to learn about scaling up and growing and creating jobs. What a beautiful day for our tech ecosystem in the city of Brampton.
For quite some years now, Brampton has shown a huge interest in startups, in entrepreneurship. There've been delegations of the mayor and councillors to Lisbon, to Web Summit in Europe. Brampton just is, and is zoned in on startups, and I think that's hugely important. Most new job creation is driven by young, early-stage companies, and they tend to, you know, renew regions, build regions, accelerate regions, and that's why we're in Brampton.
Hey, everyone, Rowetta Santos here, Vice Chair of Economic Development. I'm here at Collision at the Brampton Games Room booth, and oh my God, we are so proud of this booth. We have thousands of startups, entrepreneurs, innovators, various folks from around the world coming to stop by from the Collision Conference to check out what Brampton has to offer. And let me tell you, we've got tons.
We try to have different components with our Innovation District that all play a role, whether it's Beehive, which is our startup hub for international companies that want to land, and they go through that journey to get up startup needs, and we provide space. And we've got our Altitude Accelerator, we've got our Brampton Venture Zone, we have our academic partners. But it's also been part of conferences like this. You know, I've been, a conference like this attracts so many people, all interested in the same space. Such an important aspect of this, because we have to prepare for the jobs of tomorrow and how you train people for the jobs of tomorrow. And it's moving so fast. And so I think in every sector, we're trying to link in our population with those opportunities. And so I think it's really doubling down on the areas of opportunity, knowing the jobs are going to exist, and the ability to adapt. And so I think working with your academic partners to support them, we're doing something right now in our downtown, we're building a center for innovation, and we're welcoming our academic partners into it if they build programs that relate to the new jobs and the new economy, that we have space for them to be part of this ecosystem.
So Claire, having probably the leading tech expert in the world describe Brampton as a city that's leaning in on the jobs of the future and technology is pretty exciting. And he just, he asked him to give a clip, and he gave a clip. It could have been a TV commercial, but why to locate in Brampton? So well done, Claire. Tell us about this, this, this conference and Brampton's presence.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, Counselor Tor and Counselor Santos, as our Chair and Vice Chair, for the direction as we planned our presence this year. Brampton was actually, we were told by Patty that if they could give an award for the most creative and the most committed city or jurisdiction, they would have given that to the city of Brampton. So we're really proud of the work we did. I'd like to thank our team especially for all of the work that they did, some of which are on a well-deserved holiday this week. Our presence was, as you mentioned, over two hundred international startups coming to the city with Patty Cosgrove as the founder and his team. And that's the first time they've held that collision, it's called the Gathering, with two hundred international startups, the first time they've held that in North America. So that gave us a great opportunity to showcase not only our Innovation District, but also some of the downtown businesses. We were able to use some of their products and services to really showcase the downtown economy. Then we had three days at Collision itself, three, four days at Collision itself, with a great booth that attracted thousands of new startups. And so we're just going through all of those contacts now. Many of us have generated new leads already for startups to come to our Innovation District and hopefully become part of one of the incubators or accelerators. So thank you again for your support, Mayor Brown.
Are there questions for Claire? There is. Counselor Tor, the Chair of Economic Development Committee, who played an integral role at hosting the day in Brampton.
Thank you through you, Mr. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Claire. I just wanted to take a quick thirty seconds to say thank you to all the staff. I know you guys have been working at it for months. I've been part of at least five meetings, so I'm sure you've had like twenty more. But thank you so much for all the work you guys put in together to make this a grand success. I'm so sorry I missed it. I was sick as a dog last week. And this one wasn't the one to be missed, because I heard this was the best ever Brampton presence at Collision. So kudos to all the team that got together, made this happen. Thank you to all the Innovation District partners that partnered up with us for the Gathering and at Collision as well. Your presence made it even better. And a special shout-out to our summer student interns at Economic Development. I know they were excited. They look forward to having a job at the city of Brampton, because I think they, like they never expect the city of Brampton to be such a fun place to work at and be part of the organizing team, be part of this conference. You know, it means the world to these kids, but thank you so much to the students themselves for putting in all the hard work. So thank you once again, team. Good job, and I look forward to next year's.
Thank you, Counselor Tor. And you're not off the hook yet, Claire. Counselor, Counselor Santos has a tough question.
Thanks so much through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say really kudos to the entire Economic Development team, to Counselor Tor, Mayor Brown, and Counselor Power, Counselor Vicente, Counselor Keenan, all those who actually were there and attended. It was the best booth and the best exhibit in Collision. I was there on two occasions and was thoroughly impressed. And part of the reason why the games room and the theme at Collision was so incredible is because it was so in line with the values of the city of Brampton when it comes to the Innovation District, when it comes to different culture diversity, dynamic youthful city that we are and creative city that we are. It spoke to all of it. We had a cricket simulator, and startups were lining up to test the cricket simulator as well as all the other games. And the comments that were made by Patty, and I'll give out a kudos to Ectav Team for all of the various missions that we've been on. For Patty to say those words, the founder from Ireland, to say those words about Brampton, it's because of the relationship and our ongoing efforts to visit, to go there and establish those important relationships with these various innovators from around the world. That is the reason why we are getting those kudos. That is the reason why we are getting that recognition, is because of all of that hard work. I'll say that in meeting with the startups from the Philippines, and we had a special panel around Japan startups and JetRO, again, because of the hard work that we're doing to establish those relationships, like with Canon, who's headquartered in Brampton, who sponsored that particular panel that I was part of, and it was impressive. And then, you know, the other piece that was amazing, that was very specific to Brampton at Collision, was Gwennith's panel regarding Black entrepreneurs and Black startups and the unique needs to support Black entrepreneurs in Brampton and setting an example for the rest of the attendees around the world of what to do. So for all those reasons, Brampton was shining, Economic Development in Brampton was shining, not just because we had the best booth, you know, we did, but because that booth showcased all that is great about Brampton in every single aspect, but all of the hard work and relationship building we have done internationally for a number of years. So thank you very much.
And Claire, Counselor Santos makes a very good point on this. We've been working at this for three or four years now, trying to cultivate and create an ecosystem that supports tech jobs. And that branding that the city of Brampton had at the conference was better than some provinces and countries in terms of the activity. How many Brampton startups we had at the conference, marketing themselves to the world was incredible. And some of these startups that we saw four years ago, who are now, you know, fully developed successful companies, is, you know, part of the dream of what this is all about. But Counselor Santos mentioned something very important that I want to underline, and that is some of the councillors who have pitched in, you know, whether it was Counselor Maderos and Vicente, who went to Web Summit to pitch Brampton as an ecosystem that tech companies should have on their radar. And let's be honest, four years ago, we were not viewed internationally as a great place for tech companies to come. And we're changing that branding, we're drawing attention. You know, Counselor Santos going abroad to make that pitch. Counselor Keenan and M. Plessy, who went to Ireland, where Patty's from, to really build that Brampton brand. And so I just want to thank the councillors who have gone above and beyond to help us with this branding. We got noticed in a very significant way at Collision, and so just very happy with the team effort, staff, councillors, who all went above and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to our next announcement, which is Summer Company Cohort. Counselor Santos.
Thank you. I believe that someone from the Economic Development Office is going to be making this announcement. I think it's Ashley. Is she here? Sorry, I was just scrolling down. There you are. Hi. Thanks, Ashley. Go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, so my name's Ashley Noreen.
And I'm Birch.
And today we would like to introduce you to the participants of Summer Company twenty twenty four. We received over two hundred applications, and we would like to introduce you to the carefully selected, successful, fifteen successful students that we have.
Yep. So as we can see on the screen here, one of our first participant is Jason Mould. He's from Ward One, and his business is called Tolu Wajou Mould. Also from Ward One, we have Tyler Martins, and his business is PM Reno Services. From Ward Three, Janil Patel, his business is Prep Perfect. From Ward Four, Isaac Brown, his business is Benny Socials. Also from Ward Four, Parvati Kang, her business is Wise Wellness Kits. From Ward Five, Prem Thandi, whose business is Coco Creations. Also from Ward Six as well, Iman Sakib, whose business is ARB Canada. Also from Ward Six, Lexmina Arulana Tham, whose business is called Frozen Delight.
We have from Ward Six, Jordan Parnell for PB Streetwear. Ward Seven, Rachel Adejipon, production by Rachel. Ward Eight, David Ollari, Siblings Enterprise. Ward Nine, Nana Wafe, Yard Heroes. Ward Nine, Whitney Leighton, Divinity Beauty Inc. Ward Ten, Navia Yavis, Candle Lux. And from Callidin Yashan, Sangira, The Hockey Master.
So these are all of our successful Summer Company twenty twenty four students. Because all the wards are there, you can feel free to connect with us after, to connect with the student that's in your ward.
The website is being currently updated. The students are still in their starting phase, so as we are getting their websites up and running, they will be added to the Brampton Entrepreneur Centre's website, so that way you can connect with the students in your ward, as Birch mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very quickly through Mr. Mayor. Another successful initiative from the Economic Development Team that I'm so proud of. Last year I met with the Summer Company folks, Delisa Diamond Bling, as well as Chloe from Black Youth Creative, and just impressed with the amount of support that they got from the Economic Development Team in addition to the grant. And now watching their businesses take off at such a young age and the skills that they're getting, so just kudos to, again, Economic Development. And I'm looking forward to obviously connecting with the new Summer Company folks in wards one and five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Our next item is six point four, twenty twenty four Starter Company Plus program of the council sponsor is Counselor Power. And I believe Daniel Bishun from BEC and Economic Development Office will be having a presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council, Regional Council, and guests and staff. As Mayor Brown says, my name is Daniel, also known as hashtag the business advisor within the community. I am super delighted to announce the launch of the Starter Company Plus for twenty twenty four. Sorry, did I just say summer? Starter Company Plus for twenty twenty four. This program is designed to support entrepreneurs and business leaders in our community, provide extensive resources to help them grow and expand their businesses. Starter Company Plus offers mentorship, advanced ten-week business training, and access to grants of up to five thousand dollars. This year, again, we have forty grants, a total of two hundred thousand dollars. With one of the largest funding allocations in Ontario, this is the, there's a reason for our success. Last year, we supported over a hundred and fifty through the training program, and forty of those received grants. Participants will benefit from expert guidance, marketing support, technology strategies to enhance their business operations and grow within Brampton. We are especially excited about our new partnership with the Brampton Arts Organisation. We have decided to dedicate eight out of the forty grants specifically to the creative entrepreneurs within our city, which equates to about twenty percent of our grants. This collaboration aims to promote innovation, culture, and creativity within our community, providing vital resources for artists and creative business, creative businesses. So key dates to remember are, we do have two awesome mandatory sessions hosted by me online, August eighth and September fifth. Our businesses must attend those to be a part, to apply for the program. Application deadline will start on September thirteenth, and the official launch of the training will start on September twenty sixth. I encourage all small businesses to apply. This is a fantastic opportunity to receive the support needed to succeed in their business journey. Please, I ask council, please watch our channel, the Brampton BEC and Economic Development channel, and repost our posts for the Starter Company info sessions and, and the applications. Thank you for letting me.
Amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you very quickly through Mr. Mayor, another successful initiative from the Economic Development Team that I'm so proud of. Last year I met with the Summer Company folks, Delisa Diamond Bling, as well as Chloe from Black Youth Creative, and just impressed with the amount of support that they got from the Economic Development Team in addition to the grant. And now watching their businesses take off at such a young age and the skills that they're getting, so just kudos to, again, Economic Development, and I'm looking forward to obviously connecting with the new Summer Company folks in wards one and five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Our next item is 6.4, 2024 Starter Company Plus Program, and the council sponsor is Councillor Power. And I believe Daniel Bishun from BEC and Economic Development Office will be having a presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council, regional council, and guests and staff. As Mayor Brown says, my name is Daniel, also known as hashtag the business advisor within the community. I am super delighted to announce the launch of the Starter Company Plus for 2024. Sorry, did I just say summer? Starter Company Plus for 2024. This program is designed to support entrepreneurs and business leaders in our community, provide extensive resources to help them grow and expand their businesses. Starter Company Plus offers mentorship, advanced 10-week business training, and access to grants of up to $5,000. This year, again, we have 40 grants, a total of $200,000. With one of the largest funding allocations in Ontario, this is the, there's a reason for our success. Last year, we supported over 150 through the training program, and 40 of those received Participants will benefit from expert guidance, marketing support, technology strategies to enhance their business operations and grow within Brampton. We are especially excited about our new partnership with the Brampton Arts Organisation. We have decided to dedicate eight out of the 40 grants specifically to the creative entrepreneurs within our city, which equates to about 20% of our grants. This collaboration aims to promote innovation, culture, and creativity within our community, providing vital resources for artists and creative businesses. So key dates to remember are, we do have two awesome mandatory sessions hosted by me online, August 8th and September 5th. Our businesses must attend those to be a part, to apply for the program. Application deadline will start on September 13, and the official launch of the training will start on September 26. I encourage all small businesses to apply. This is a fantastic opportunity to receive the support needed to succeed in their business journey. Please, I ask council, please watch our channel, the Brampton BEC and Economic Development Channel, and repost our posts for the Starter Company info sessions and the applications. Thank you for letting me speak this morning about this wonderful program, and remember, if we are working with small businesses in your wards, please don't forget to recommend them to BEC. We're here to support them in all parts of their journey. Any questions?
No, I see no questions on the board. Thank you, Daniel.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Okay, this takes us to our next announcement, which is the 2023 United Way Campaign Check Presentation. The council sponsor is Councillor Power. And Councillor Power was pretty dedicated to this campaign. I do recall seeing him in the water with a thousand ducks, singing Splish Splash.
It was indeed. Good morning, Mayor Brown, members of council, our leadership team, and everybody else in the chambers are watching online. It is a pleasure to be here today, and my name is Terran Chahul. I'm the manager for operations and, sorry, facilities and maintenance. But today Anna and I are here representing our, and Michael are here representing our core team to give you the update on last year's campaign. I swear our team's a little bit bigger than this, but a few members are on vacation and in Europe watching the Uefa, so it's just us three for today. And as you know, the charity of choice for the corporation is United Way, and we raise funds for them, and their ultimate goal of fighting homelessness and poverty within the city of Brampton. And we generally do this in two ways. One is our staff members through payroll pledges donate money on a weekly, bi-weekly or monthly basis. And the second is through events that you've all been to and that we generate proceeds from them. So events such as the annual barbecue, the duck race, and the silent auction. So this year, we are proud to announce that we raised about $56,000 from pledges and almost $46,000 from events, for a grand total of $102,000, beating our goal of... So we raised about $102,000, beating our goal of $96,000. And the notable thing about this year's campaign is we raised a lot more funds through the events, and Mayor Brown and no small part to you and, for example, Councillor Power jumping into the water and getting us items for the silent auction. The duck race alone, when you guys jumped in the water, that raised like $3,000 overnight, so a huge boost. So we raised a lot, a lot of money, and we beat our goal. We raised funds for a great cause that go a long way in fighting poverty and homelessness, especially in this climate where cost of living is through the roof, food prices are through the roof. Your dollars are really making a huge impact. So I just wanted to take this moment and thank every single city staff member that donated money, that donated their time and their effort. This truly is a, is a team effort that we can't do alone. Mayor Brown, yourself, and all council members that are here, you guys always champion our events. You are always promoting these events and bringing attention to these, so we can't thank you enough. And of course, our CEO and our leadership team that always, again, also champion these events and provide more promotion. So, and then the last team, people I want to mention is our core team. So I'm just here representing them, the guys Anna, Miguel, Michael, Michael Kirin. These guys are ones that really put an effort and put these events on throughout the year that, that raised funds. So this sort of shows the spirit of the city of all coming together for, for a great cause, and with your continued support, we hope to replicate the same success next year. And to commemorate this moment, before we give the big check to, to United Way and transfer the funds, we just want to commemorate this moment and have a photo. So Mayor Brown, council member and leadership team, if we can come together for a quick photo on this, that'd be amazing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Terran and team. Our next item is the added item from Councillor Singh, item 6.6.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'd like to invite Brub Johtkab to come up. She received two awards from the Credit Valley Conservation Authority. One was for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Leadership Award, and the other was Environmental Awareness Award. And I've known Brub for many, many years, and she's done actually a lot of documentaries of environmental issues around the globe, and some pressing issues, especially around water, and, and the scarcity of it emerging, especially in the upcoming years with climate change and everything. So always been passionate about the climate and nice to see you get recognized. If you want to add anything, you're more than welcome to.
No, just we all have a part to play. Either we can complain, or we can just pick up our garbage bags and start cleaning up our environment.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for representing wards nine and 10 well. And you'd also request a picture.
Okay, this now takes us to item seven. Looking to the clerk. That should take us to 7.1. We have a delegation from Ian Jones, President of BGI Group, and authorized advisor to New Life Community Church.
And Mr. Jones is online today.
Okay.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing me this time to come before you. Just before I touch on the item and is related, I want to commend you and the Planning Department for bringing forward the CIP for the whole city of Brampton for the affordable housing, you know, which is sorely needed. So it does relate to, you know, what I'm just going to touch on within these few minutes. On the CIP, I think it's missing a big opportunity, and that is to especially note the faith-based communities and nonprofit groups that have the land mainly mortgage-free and actually make rental numbers work, because all of the developers that have been building condos, et cetera, those not, those numbers do not work for rental housing, and especially affordable rental housing. So we're concentrating on, on church properties, faith-based properties, et cetera, to make these numbers work and in fact build them. You know, so we submitted the, the specific one before you to the Planning Department just over a year ago, and since it's instituted the new two-stage pre-consult, in the last two years, the zoning application fee, just the application fee, has quadrupled. And for this specific project, which is trying to produce 650 units of purpose-built rentals for seniors, families, singles, there's one, two, three, four bedrooms in the, the design that's in the Planning Department. But that, that planning fee has gone from $70,000 to $320,000 in two years, and this project is at a full stop because of that. You know, because again, this is, again, faith-based groups who don't have the money. So we have to leverage these things, and yes, a rezoning does increase the land value, and that's what allows the construction loan to kick in and get the thing built. But when you bring it right back to the, the current situation, there's very few churches that could come up with that kind of money. And, and we're only advisors to them, you know, we certainly don't have it either. So we, we produced the original OP and zoning, et cetera, for the Day Spring project that's on Gorbey Drive right now, and there's about 2,000 Brampton residents living in that project. And that started the exact same way. The land was owned by the church, the rezoning allowed the land to, value to increase and create the construction loan, and it got built. You know, and this, this item before you, you know, is basically to ask for consideration to waive that, that the application fee, so that the process can continue and this project get built. I think that's all.
We have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Singh, seconded by Councillor Paleshi, to receive the delegation. All those in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
This takes us to our next item, which is 7.2, and we have a few delegations on food trucks affecting businesses in the downtown. We have four delegations. I see Terran Devigan, Navneet Singh, Kerry Percival, and David Kapil. And to the clerk, I believe there's five minutes permitted per, up to five minutes permitted per delegation. So the first delegation, Terran, it can come forward.
Okay, so Navneet then. Okay. A very good morning, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Navneet Singh Lotte. I own, I'm the director of Tadka King, which is right across Main and Queen, opposite of Rose Theatre, and we have the two entrances. One is at the back where the Nelson Square parking is, and one is facing Main Street. We have been facing a lot of challenges due to these food trucks. We opened our business in October 2021, and we did a very good job. We did good business in 2021. 2022 was hit by construction, then we had very less customers. Then we got food trucks over there, which basically, literally, they just stole our business. So what happens is, we have a lot of challenges. First challenge is, they don't have washrooms there, so they just come and use our facilities. And we don't know if they're cus, our customers, or they belong to those food trucks. And secondly, there's no parking over there. People just park on the foot, like pedestrian ways, and we don't find, our customers, they don't find the parking spots, even in the Nelson Square parking, although it's free. People just park there, they sit in this food truck area, create nuisance over there. Not, I have no offense to say that, people just drink in their cars over there and they take the takeouts and just start dancing, play a lot of, like, music, loud music over there. And also, they have been dumping the, like, the used oil in the city drains. They don't have enough, like, garbage bins over there, there's used rubber bins, which is like another cost to us, and we don't have, like, every time, we don't have customers over there. So this is like killing our business. We have been, we have lost our business almost 60% reduction, and due to that, we have to give unemployment to the workers who have been working with us from last three years. We try to create opportunities for Brampton community, giving them the employment, but this, these food trucks, initially they started with one, two, now there are eight, eight food trucks over there. So, which is like totally intolerable for us, and it's giving us very hard time, and I present whole restaurant team, it's not only me, it's like Pizza Nini, Sri Bites, and then Oro Bites, Subway, all those are my fellow members who have been working hard to sustain their businesses. And I know I have been present, I'm, I have been selected from all of them to present all of them on their behalf, so I'm requesting in your kind of attention to bring this issue further, so that we can get these trucks rid of and to be removed from that location. And moreover, it's a private parking lot where they're just operating these food trucks, which is, I think, in violation. So this is my request and plea in your attention again. This is, all these points I brought to you, it's not to gain any brownie points, but to let you know, we are struggling a lot, and we are facing a lot of challenges due to these food trucks. Thank you.
Question from Deputy Mayor Singh.
Yeah, thank you for coming to delegate. It's something I have been thinking about, because I've seen the evolution of the food trucks. I know, especially for your business, because I do use them, I, I enjoy the Jamaican one in particular, but I notice they've all become Indian except one, so it probably affects your business even more, right? So it wasn't, it wasn't like that at the beginning, but yeah.
That's what happened, Deputy Mayor. So in the beginning, when these, the food truck, the, the person who like controls this, he came to us, he's like, we're gonna have diversity over there, which, which never happened. So it started with one Indian food truck, then it like all food trucks are Indian food trucks now. It's not only in Brampton downtown, it's everywhere in Brampton, and this is going, this is ongoing issue right now.
Yeah.
Again, I don't want to complain about the other places, but I just want my place to be safe, because my customers are not feeling safe as well. This is another issue. They feel like the people are just, you know, randomly moving around there, and nobody knows who they are.
Yeah, and on top of that, you know, you have the construction in downtown and everything, so.
We have been hit hard. As I said, we opened in 2021. We did very good business at that time, and thankfully, not to praise my own, not to blow my own trumpet, but we own three locations now. But other two locations are running well, but this, from where we started, we are having a lot of challenges.
All right, thank you for those.
Add one question in, one suggestion that's been made, and wanted to get your thoughts on it, is what if you said there had to be a non-compete clause, where if there is another, if there's a culinary option in the downtown, then the food truck cannot be the same use? For example, you look at, you know, Indian food with, with your restaurant, then you couldn't have a food truck that was offering the same culinary option if there was, you know, you got verres, which is, you know, Serbian food, then you couldn't have a Serbian food truck. Because, you know, Councillor Singh pointed out, when it started, it was a variety of culinary options. I remember there was a Filipino food truck, there was, there was a variety that actually added to the options in the downtown, and part of the goal was to bring people to the downtown to have foot traffic. What are your thoughts if there was a non-compete requirement, that they could not offer the same culinary options that exist in the downtown?
Honorable Mayor, I admire your thought. That's what how it started, but eventually what happened is, I'll give you an example. So the truck, which is right beside our location, beside our back entrance, that truck was some, some, like, it was, I don't know which cuisine was it, it was different cuisine before. Then that guy didn't, like, he couldn't sustain, because there's not much traffic as per his cuisine. So what happened? He ended up selling that, and now the person who owns that, he is using our, like, similar name. Our, our name is Tadka King, he is using Tadka, Shahi Tadka. So he's, he's just trying to, you know, steal the business from us. So this is what happening. So I know it is a good thought to have more cuisine, multi-cuisine, so that we can bring, we can attract more, you know, different communities. But what happens is, the other companies, they came, their different trucks came, different cuisines came, but they never stayed there, they just sold their trucks to Indian cuisines, now all are Indian. It's not gonna happen. We, it's, I, I know, they tried it, and we were with them at that time, yes, okay, no problem, we are with, because we want to grow together, right? But it's not working out, it's not, there, there'll be no control over it. Even if we try this, it's not gonna work out. Although in our restaurant, it's not only Indian, we have Chinese cuisine. We have, like, what do you call, Mediterranean cuisine. It's not only Indian cuisine. We, we are trying to target different cuisines now, just to attract more people in our facility.
Councillor Keenan has a question, followed by Councillor Mederos and Councillor Tor.
Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Thank you, uh Mayor Brown. Um and you know, I, I, I would, I feel terrible for the, the businesses that are down there for, for what they're going through and I've, I've seen it firsthand. And, and, and for me, it's not just the competition, but it's, it also comes down to the cleanliness um of how they're operating these trucks. I've heard tons of complaints, I've seen things myself firsthand. Um and you know, I, I, I'm not sure that that is the place that we should be having food trucks, to be perfectly honest. Um as a restaurateur myself, um I know how hard it is for the restaurants that are receiving the competition. Um that's our, that's our number one challenge. Um but you know, obviously, we know that these stationary food trucks can do it in a lot, a lot less expense um than a, than a full brick and mortar. Um and I think as we try to grow businesses in the downtown and bring in restaurants, um I personally think we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot if we allowed it to continue because I wouldn't wanna put a restaurant down there to try to compete with a food truck industry. Um uh so that, those are just my comments on it. Um I'll wait to see uh what other people say about it. Um and I know we have more delegations, but um I think something has to be done uh with the food trucks, uh definitely around the standards uh to which they are operating. Um if you have a, a food truck, it does not move from its location. There is a lot of sanitary items that need to be done with removing its oil, with um its everyday cleaning, um its water supply, um and I'm speaking from experience. All those things should be, be hooked up to the, the building in a stationary position so that it can be sustainable. And if they are not, I would be, I would, I would be horrified to go inside of one. So knowing what I know, I, I think change definitely needs to happen, but I'll leave my comments there for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, followed by Counselor Mederos and Counselor Tor.
Uh thank you, Mayor Brown, and uh I think a lot of the comments, uh the questions that you asked, uh uh my, my take on this is, it is mixed feelings for you, uh Mister, Mister Mayor. Um so proponents of food trucks have always said that, you know, the restaurant should not be afraid because you're attracting more people and eventually they'll get to discover your restaurant, right? So the idea, uh the mindset is that by us attracting people to the core, people who are walking around will see your restaurant and you will have some additional business. In your experience with the food trucks as of today, um and I, I already know the answer from what your delegation, but just to make it clear, have you, have, did you pick up any new customers? Did you find yourself getting new traffic or, you know, wh- what are your thoughts on, on that?
Uh thanks for the question, Counselor. So basically, uh if I just talk about me, then I'll be selfish, right? Although I'm just sitting beside them, but there are many other, you know, restaurants, Auto Bike, Street Bites, Pizza Nini, Subway, which are on the other side of the road. They, they are losing the customers as well because everybody's going to that location. So is the question is like, it's not only about me, it's about Brampton downtown restaurants. My friends from my mar, mark from the street, Pizza Nini and Street from Street by Tarun has already left. Then we have Auto Bike, Mister Jessica, they accompanied me today just to put this delegation in because it's not only, again, I'm, I'm repeating myself, but it's not only me who's losing service, as like the customers, they are losing as well, they are losing more than me. I'm just sitting there as, and your question was like, have we welcome any more like new customers? No, because they're just going, they're just going there, that's it. They, they, they go there, they eat there, they use our washrooms. And we don't know if they're our customers, if they belong to them. And then they come, they come inside, they'll talk to us, they'll go, okay, can we get the takeout containers? And they take those takeout containers, go there and take their food and go back.
Yeah.
And then I had, I had like photographs, I had videos captured in which people were, people have parked in front of our entrance and, and knowingly that this, this belongs to us, they don't care.
No, now through you, Mister Mayor, thank, thank you very much for that. I think the other point, and, and it's been brought up uh by some of the counselors, is the context where we are today. So in a perfect world, if we had a bustling downtown, you didn't have construction going on, you had, you didn't have uh, uh because I hear from the restaurants here about with the, with the park being closed, that they're not getting foot traffic as well and they're reaching out. Um so uh through you, Mister Mayor, I think one of the challenges is the context in which we're working in. Uh with all the challenges that you have, this is just another additional challenge
Exactly.
that, that's on you. Um so uh, yeah, I, I have a hard time supporting it, understanding what you're going through today. If this was a different time, um then maybe I could see, uh but thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Tor is next with a question.
Through you, Mister Mayor. Uh I just wanna say, to be respectful of everybody's time, I know there's other delegations on the same matter. I'd rather we hear from all the delegations. These discussions have been going on with the Brampton BIA. There's two council members that sit on the BIA that have been part of these discussions. I just request my colleagues that, let's go through all the delegations, let's hear everybody out. I know the Chair of the BIA is also gonna speak. We also have an in-camera item to have these discussions. Let's save our comments for the end. Let's hear out all the delegations, what they have to say. They, they know what they're gonna say, they, they have their points on it. I'm just respectfully asking that we save our conversations to the end. That's all. Thank you for your delegation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh Navneet, uh moving on, uh we have Kerry Percival. Thank you, and you have five minutes.
Great, thank you. Good morning, members of Brampton City Council. As the Chair, the Downtown Brampton Business Improvement Area, I'm here today to provide our reasons for not extending the food truck pilot. Our BIA has strongly advocated for initiatives that enhance our downtown core and support our local businesses. However, the continuation of the food truck pilot in the food district is causing significant harm to our BIA membership. We have carefully evaluated the impact of extending the food truck pilot and our conclusion is that would, that it would add challenges already faced by our BIA members, as we just heard. The owner of the food district has been unwilling to work with recommendations provided by an evaluation committee, which is deeply concerning to us. We believe that the lack of co- cooperation in implementing necessary improvements undermines the potential benefits of the pilot. I do have correspondence between us and the BIA, if you would like to keep that on record. Um our BIA worked diligently to support the food trucks during the initial phase, recognizing that it would bring vitality and diversity to the downtown area. However, the current situations have shifted and it's clear that the interests of our BIA members need to be adequately protected. The current shameful aesthetics appearance of the area with multiple closed trucks, dilapidated cars and increased litter, all have consequences for the active and inviting laneways that we all have invested in, in the last three years. We strongly urge the city council to consider the implications of extending the food truck pilot without the necessary cooperation and support from all stakeholders involved. Our downtown businesses are the lifeblood of our community and we need to ensure that their voices are heard and their concerns are being addressed. The food trucks are not BIA members, we have to listen to our members. In closing, we hope you will support our decision to withdraw the BIA's endorsement of the food truck pilot as outlined in the current bylaw. A collaborative and respectful approach is essential to the success of any initiative in our downtown core. Thank you for taking the time to listen of our concerns and we look forward to working together. Thank you.
Okay, see, no questions, thank you, uh Kerry. Our next delegation is from Dave Kapil.
Good morning. Seems like I missed you all, everybody. I've been here for about a year, I think, so it's nice to see you all. Um I guess food truck is a question. First of all, I wanna thank BIA and, and the property owner who did the pilot project because I think these pilot projects are very important. Without them, we would not know what's good and what's not. One thing is um very positive came out of this pilot project is that it told us that Bramptonians want a place to get together and entertain ourselves. Because I don't think this um food truck business on its own, if you look at it on its own as a business failed, it was a success. And the reason it was successful is because Bramptonian want, want to get together on spot. And it was very consistent, there was a picture I had, can we display that, somebody? Yeah. So there was a we had recently purchased a eight to twenty-eight building, eight to twenty-eight Queen Street uh West Building, which backs, the back of it faces these food trucks. When I come out of the parking lot from Nelson Square, on the right of the picture you see, that's the view you have. Now earlier I saw, uh I listened to Claire uh talk about economic development, what they did, what the mayor did, what all of you are doing, doing amazing work in terms of developing business, bringing business to Brampton. The problem is when these business owners come to downtown Brampton, the question is, do you want them to see the right picture or the left picture? To keep them here, to, for them to sustain here, we need to have the right picture. That's a picture I got about twenty years ago from the city. That's a vision I think some staff folks had. Um so when that building came up for sale, the problem they were facing, the staff was facing, that the landlord was not cooperating. They did not want to work with the city and to improve the building. Today, you have a landlord who wants to, who's dying to op- operate and change this in the back. And I, I know we have this, the problem is the food truck are not giving that impression we want to give a downtown. And that's the big thing for me. It's, I think it's, it's nothing else other than the, the, the perception of our, of our downtown core. Because that impacts our city, that impacts our businesses, that impacts our business tax base we receive, that impacts organizations like Rogers Communication not coming to Brampton. That impacts Triple Eight tenants not coming to Brampton. And I think, and those have huge repercussions for our city because that reduces tax base coming in. It brings more unemployment because as businesses around our downtown will suffer, that will bring more unemployment, which brings more crime, which brings more cost on revenues. So to me, it's not as small as just one issue, it's much bigger than that. And I'm very encouraged that, you know, from all the things our council members are doing, our staff is doing, I, I talk to them, I listen to them. And I think this basically sums it up. If you have any questions, I'll be.
Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, um Mister Chair. I believe that's all the delegations for now, so I'll just uh, I just have some questions and, and comments and follow-up to Kerry's delegation and yours as well, Dave. Good to see you both. Um so when this first started last year, I was one of the biggest supporters. I was there almost every single weekend, purchasing the different varieties of food from the different food trucks, posting on social media, loving the fact that there was a DJ. Um I think it was every single Friday night, took my nieces, took my family there and was very uh supportive of it. Um just like some of the concerns expressed from the delegations as well as from member, other my, my colleagues, for some reason that started to change at some point. Um Tito Jumbo's got his new location, which is now uh the former Churros location. And I know Pizza Nini had left and you've gone back to your original location and the, some other food trucks left as well. And the variety of what it was in the beginning started to shift. Um and then it became almost one, only one food option in, in that particular area. I have also noticed that it's, I've also noticed that it has uh, um that the public health issues have declined. Have you noticed the same thing? Like you've mentioned in your delegation about overall the concept, which is great, and, and the need for people to gather, but in terms of the public health, safety issues, have you also seen and experienced similar things?
Oh absolutely. Um I, I, we've seen the issues as a result of it. I don't think the idea is, to me, we can have all those food choices, the way it looks on that picture on the left-hand side. We don't need to go this route to bring choices. We want people to come and stay and spend the evening there, not for an hour, to have a, grab a sandwich and go. Um the, the garbage bins have become a huge issue. It's an embarrassment for us, we deal with, we have a, and, and I'm being very candid, we have a financial uh advising practice and we have wealthy clients come in uh to see our office. And lately, for about last year or so, they've been saying, what's going on to Brampton? What's happening here? Like what a mess you guys have. And I feel embarrassed because of that, because I'm a very proud Bramptonian. I know what all of you are doing. And it's, it's, it, and this is really impacting uh the perception of our downtown. Um not only just the hygiene, um it's, it's gone the other way because it's pure business. We can never succeed as a city if we're looking at, at one business alone. Or one, one or two tenants alone, or one food truck, two food trucks making money alone.
So, so I guess uh through you, Mister Mayor, back uh to Dave, and, and I agree with you, like I think that the overall concept and vision for what we want to see happen and the activation happen in some of these spaces um is like what you've presented here on the left-hand side. Now the question is whether or not this pilot has achieved that goal so far. And, and I'm with folks and I, you know, I'll ask the question to you, I'm not sure whether or not the food district pilot has actually gotten us to that point.
Well, this pilot has, I'll tell you one thing, it did. It told me to go and buy that building when it came up available for sale. It told me to go and fix that building and we're gonna invest ton of money in there, we're gonna invest a lot of money because we want to change that entire back, back, back area. Because we, this pilot told us, there's a demand for it. And, and I think that place, you know, it just sent us a very big message. And I think most of the buildings in the back, they look, they look actually reasonably well, if you look at it on Diplock Lane, with the exception of our building, one building, which is really horrible. And if I have food trucks sitting in front of my building's face, there is no way I'm gonna invest money in there. It's gonna stay like that.
And Dave, just to wrap things up, so you want to open restaurants there, behind your building?
Absolutely, hundred percent.
Permanent restaurants?
Absolutely, one hundred percent, facing Diplock Lane.
And how quickly are you prepared to do that?
Oh, we are actually doing drawings right now. We are in the process of doing, trying right now. I think I'm expecting shovels to go in the ground no later than August.
Okay. Um Counselor Pasante, I see, is on the board.
Thank you very much, uh Mister Mayor, and thank you, Dave, for your delegation to all the other delegations that came. Uh Dave, I think that you've kind of summarized really where we seem to be going is that we understand that making a place in the alley, as it were, behind the businesses that are on the main roadways there is an amazing potential. We have seen successes in alleyways in other cities where they activate those spaces. And you know, we should be in many ways thanking uh the organizers of this food district for helping us to realize what is obvious in so many other locations. The question is now, what do we do next? Because we have the BIA that has withdrawn its, its support for the program as it is, the food trucks are still there. I, I would like to understand better and perhaps it's, it's upon me to speak to some of the businesses that were there before that withdrew, for example, like Pizza Nini, why they withdrew? Because I'm not sure if we can pick the winners and losers of the food choices that end up being successful in a particular location. You know, Thakka King, for example, as, as Navneet was here, um it's a great business and it does very well, but there's nothing that would bar another Indian food establishment from moving in right next door. We don't control that, the market controls these things. And I'm not sure if we really have that uh, that wisdom, if you will, to make those choices, the market chooses. Um but uh very supportive of the idea of growing this food district, if it can be more bricks and mortar, that would of course be wonderful because it mirrors the kind of activities that you see in other places. Like when you think about these buildings, typically they're a thousand, two thousand square feet, a lot of the space faces the main street. It, it's easy to allocate, say, three hundred, four hundred square feet to the back and now you have activation on the rear. Um so I, I wanna thank everyone that's delegated, uh you too, Dave, for bringing this forward and we'll have a discussion and see where we go from here. Thank you.
If I may just add one thing, see, the beauty about these, this location is we face Main Street, I mean, we face Queen Street and we face Diplock. Diplock is where parking happens, people, all businesses coming there, they come there. When they come out, just imagine if you have row of restaurants all around there. So we own, our company owns fair bit of the real estate in the back on Diplock Lane. So our plan is to have basically every single property have restaurants in the back. That's where we would like to see it go. And I think, if I can just throw one more thing in quickly, uh And I think, if I can just throw one more thing in quickly, I wouldn't mind to see facade program for the Diplock Lane come in a little bit more, to help a lot of the building owners to improve their backs. So if you did that, you know, fix the sidewalks, we want to put like interlocking bricks in the sidewalk, in the parking area, so it beautifies, so people have benches and they sit down and have their restaurants properly, they eat there. So if we work together, we'll be laughing, I think it'll be awesome.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you for your passion and care for the downtown. It certainly doesn't go unnoticed. Okay. Oh, were you the?
Terran Diglin.
Terran Diglin, you're the first delegate.
Yes, sorry, I just had to step up for a minute.
Okay, yes, please come forward.
Good morning, guys. To begin with my concern with food trucks present in the downtown Brampton, that these food trucks are really affecting us brick and mortar restaurants in downtown Brampton. Mostly, most of the things, I gotta say the same thing, which you've already heard, so I'll save some times for other people to put their words in. But still, in the end, I, very short summary, I came in 2023, last year, thinking we have a lot of food traffic in downtown Brampton. But as soon as I opened, the first day I see, the next day I see the construction started right in front of my restaurant. And I had to face for a very fine, first five months, really, it was really, really bad, we were completely blocked down, basically, on our side. Once the construction is over, we, I did not see much for traffic, whole, the whole summer was gone to the food truck side. Then I started getting really worried about it, and I did my own research about what having food trucks affecting on us businesses. So I said, I thought I'm going to give it just about one year to see if this is really helping us or not, but after all these thoughts, it's really not helping us, affecting really, really bad. When I opened up, I had some other friends, they wanted to be in the Brampton downtown. But I found out through the BIA, the pilot food pilot program was, it just introduced last year, when the restaurants were, they were already there, were offering the same food, everybody's offering the same food as a concern. And again, garbage, garbage disposal, oil disposal, noise pollution, those are the same thing, everybody faces it. And even now, coming to this year, we had to face another three, four weeks because of the road, they were paving the roads, and now the gate, the gauge park is closed as well, so we have no food traffic. And the most of the food traffics in downtown, it comes from the Algoa University kids as well. And they're going through their own challenges as well. And for us people, we have a lot of, I got almost five employees, employees working, and I had to get them down to three, just because I could not afford it anymore, because we do not have any food traffic. And the negative things about food trucks, of course, the noise, that's one thing, and the bad activities, we see homeless people there all the time. And of course, before City of Brampton and we were supporting them, providing some of the help, but we, as a fiscal restaurant, we did not really get enough. So in summary, of course, they're affecting us really, really bad, and we really need a good solution to that, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. So we have, those are, completes the delegations, we have a motion moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Basante, to receive the delegations, all those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to item seven point three. We have a delegation from Ian Underwood, CEO of Habitat for Humanity Greater Toronto Area, and we can bring forward the staff report ten point four one for Habitat for Humanity Contribution Agreement, twenty-five William Street at this time.
Thank you so much to the mayor. Really pleased to be back here, delegating today. I actually want to repeat what an earlier person, Ian Jones, commented on, and just commending you on your community improvement report. We particularly were impressed with the emphasis you put, not just on rental, but on ownership, in how you're thinking about affordable housing here in Brampton, because thinking about all of the students behind us, I am sure all of them would really love to stay in Brampton and would really love to aspire to be homeowners. And your support of this project and homeownership in general is just a reflection of making that possible here in Brampton. So just quickly moving to the next slide, if you would, I just want to remind you of where, where, where this item today comes from. So just to remind you, back in November, staff brought forward a recommendation to you to use a little bit more than six million dollars of your Housing Accelerator funds in support of two Habitat projects. You authorized staff to then work with us to put together a contribution agreement, which essentially would enshrine what will we, Habitat, do in return for that funding you're making available to us. So that's what's in front of you today. Let me just then move to the next slide, and I'll also comment, lots of hard work between last time we saw you and now, really want to thank your staff in general, and Steve Ganesh and Melinda Yoganen in particular, for how hard they worked on this. So just again, what are we talking about? Two projects, one is just a kilometer north of here on William Street, just, just off of, of here Ontario. The other one's about ten kilometers northeast up at Countryside, just south of the Caladen border. Next slide, and so in wards one and wards nine. Next slide, just a reminder, both of these projects are, no, sorry, this previous slide, both of these projects will be stacked back-to-back townhome projects, they will be family-sized units, so three and a few four-bedroom, bedroom units. The stacked back-to-back townhome concept works well for us, it's very, it's the most affordable product, we can deliver and still have a ground-related family kind of living environment, and it's also very energy-efficient for families in running these homes. So then, the, the next and final slide is really just to summarize what is before you today, so what we are committing to in return for the funding. The first is to build and deliver these twenty-seven affordable ownership homes. Second bullet is really two bullets. So the first is the eligibility for those homes, income eligibility will be based on the, now the province of Ontario's definition of affordable ownership, which is that it's at the sixtieth household income at, at or below the sixtieth income percentile. The second part of that, which you have emphasized, is your desire for us to prioritize applicants who live or work in Brampton. So that is in the contribution agreement in, before you. We've worked with City of Brampton, staff and corporate communications staff, put together a marketing plan to show them how we will geo-target, so that we are reaching households here. There is language in the agreement, asking you to authorize staff, that if there's an exception, if there's a household that has an existing connection to Brampton, they may have grown up here, they moved away, they want to be back home with family, that staff could then be authorized to work with us and determine whether that exception should be made. Last and finally, the homes will, any unused funds come back to you. The, the homes themselves will remain affordable in the long term. And again, this is unique to us in Ontario, so Habitat GTA, to our knowledge, is unique in Ontario, for being able to deliver the stability of ownership, the opportunity to build equity through ownership, but being able to say to you, those two communities you saw on the previous page, those homes will remain affordable from one owner to the next. There may be circumstances where we need to say, we need to make an exception, and again, the expectation there, or the core request, is for you to authorize staff to work with us and determine whether it is okay to let a unit sell to the market. Should that happen, you are still in the driver's seat about determining what happens to your money that's in those homes, whether you want Habitat to use it to build another home, or to have it come back to you for affordable housing. Back to you.
Thank you. I think you're excited for Habitat for Humanity to do more great work in our community. I know this was a difficult parcel, because of the state the parcel was in, and so those complications made it more difficult, but challenges make our jobs more exciting, and glad that we've been able to solve this, and this will make a difference in the lives of so many of our residents. If we move the staff report forward, so we can talk about the staff report, or a question to the delegation, Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and this project has been a longstanding project in Ward One, and very excited and happy that some solutions have been brought forward, and clarification has also been identified in the report. One question to staff, and I've spoken to staff, and you know, you and I have spoken about it as well, is that HST portion.
Right.
I can't recall if in the original motion that we passed, whether or not we made it as a requirement, that if and when the federal government returns the HST, that HST portion, and if, if Ian, you can clarify what that amount is, if that can be then returned to the city's HAF bucket of money.
So yes, and yes, and thank you for asking. So through the chair, regret, happily, the federal and provincial government have exempted all rental units, all co-op housing, all student housing from HST, but affordable ownership was overlooked. So these homes are still subject to HST at about seventy thousand dollars a unit, that amounts to about two point five million of your funding. And so, as, as we had said in November, we would very much appreciate if you also pile on with us in our advocacy with the feds and the province to provide that relief to these homes. If that happens, the contribution agreement makes it very clear, that money is coming back to you, the City of Brampton, to, to decide now where are you going to deploy it.
To Commissioner Ganesh.
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Santos. To your question, the original motion spoke to unused funds being returned back to the City of Brampton, not specifically HST. So if there's a desire for council today to, you know, add the HST component to, as part of our advocacy to both the province and the federal government, staff would take that as direction.
Thank you. So I would add that then as direction, because I think it's silly for the government to, you know, to allow us to use the HAF money to support affordable housing options like this, but then have to pay them two point five million dollars in HST. Like, it kind of defeats the whole purpose of that fund. So if we could just add that the city also join advocacy efforts to remove or to waive the HST on projects such as this one, I think that would be helpful, because it sounds like the contribution agreement would have that money returned anyway, so we don't...
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Santos, that's right, the contribution agreement has the mechanisms, but I think there would be value in the direction to staff on an advocacy front to have the HS, HST specifically pointed out to be returned.
Okay, so we can either add or revise one of those clauses, that's, yeah, that's perfect, that the mayor on behalf of council be requested to write to the pre-refered Minister Kalandra, as well as Prime Minister Trudeau and Minister Fraser, to reaffirm a request to waive, I guess it is, HST applicable to Habitat for Humanity projects within the City of Brampton. Is there a different way to classify that, so that it includes things like the Home Opportunities Project?
Through Mayor Brown, through to Counselor Santos, who may want to say, this Habitat for Humanity and similar projects.
And similar projects, perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion moved by, maybe the ward counselors, the ward counselors here would be.
It's Ward, it's Ward one, I think.
Yes, Williams.
Okay, moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Basante. All those in favor, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, this takes us to our next item, and that is eight point one, correct? Government Relations Updates, welcome, Andre.
Through the mayor, I'll begin today's update with regional matters, we can move to next slide, please. This week on the regional agenda, we have a Peel Living Annual General Meeting taking place at nine AM on this coming Thursday, followed by regular regional council meeting.
Staff have reviewed the agendas and selected several items to flag for council today.
We can move to next slide, please. First, we have item thirteen point two, Annual Homelessness Funding Reports 2023, 2024. The staff report provides an overview of how federal reaching home and provincial homelessness prevention program funds were, were expanded by Peel Region as well for the fiscal year of 2023, 2024. The federal reaching home program provides funding for projects and activities that contribute to preventing and reducing homelessness, with the amount of fifteen point six million being provided to the region of Peel for 2023, 2024. The provincial homelessness prevention program also aims to prevent and address homelessness as well, including the chronic homelessness. Through that program, the region has received forty-two point three million for the same fiscal year. The report also points out to an important aspect of regional homelessness work, and that is the need for an ongoing advocacy with both federal and provincial governments, as, as, as it requires additional funding and resources to ensure that there are resources available to address homelessness in Peel. I'd only point out that city advocacy has been complimentary of the regional work, and city continues to work with the region to advocate at all levels of government to help address homelessness. Next slide, please. Item thirteen point three is the Housing Services 2023 Annual Report. The report provides an overview of accomplishments for, for 2023, and services delivered through Peel's annual housing and homelessness plan. The report also indicates that the overall plan, goal of the plan is to help clients get and keep housing that is affordable and suitable. The report also indicates that the overall housing situation in the region has been impacted by significant influx of asylum claimants, with region having been able to assist over almost four hundred asylum claimants to, to secure and find permanent housing in 2023. The region is shifting with its approach to a more sustainable model for supporting asylum claimants in Peel, and efforts to secure more sustainable funding from both federal and provincial governments continue. On July eleventh, 2024, Regional Council will be, will, will receive an update report on, on the, on the ongoing work. Also, staff observed that in 2024, a new housing project opened in Brampton called Birch Place, adding fifty affordable rental units and seventeen youth transitional housing units. The city has been supportive of Peel's advocacy on the matter, and will continue to work with the region to secure both federal, federal and provincial funding and resources necessary. Next slide, please. Next, we have item thirteen point four, Armac Transitional Housing Update. The report recommends that the region enters into a new funding agreement to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand per year. On April seventeenth, 2024, Brampton City Council approved a one-time grant for Armac House for, of three hundred thousand dollars to support the operation, operating costs of twelve units located in Brampton. If regional funding is approved, city staff will work with the regional staff for any necessary alignments in funding agreements. Next slide, please. Next, we have item fifteen point one, Proposed Memorandum of Understanding with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. The draft memorandum of understanding recognizes the fact that following the removal of region's land use planning responsibilities on July first, 2024, the region will continue to participate in land use planning process, but only to the extent that it relates to delivery of regional infrastructure and services. Staff observed that refinements are required to clarify the specific nature of region's role in providing regional infrastructure and services. The, the draft MOU does specify that it intends to support a collaborative approach to transition of Peel's land use planning responsibilities to lower-tier municipalities. Staff recommend that it is too premature to enter into an agreement, with additional details required. Next slide, please. Moving on to federal updates, excuse me, to provincial updates, the province has announced sixteen million dollars investment into Invasive Species Action Fund over the next three years. The fund aims to protect the economy and environment from threats presented by invasive species. Municipalities are eligible for funding. Invasive species are widespread in the city and have become a major threat to local ecological integrity and natural... to local ecological integrity and natural areas in the city. The Invasive Species Action Fund can potentially support city's work as it's currently undertaking development of the invasive species strategy and other efforts in the city regarding managing invasive species. City has applied for funding. Next slide, please. I would only add that in terms of provincial matters, that the provincial legislative has risen for the summer and will resume on October 21st. Moving on to federal updates. Yesterday, Mayor Brown, as well as members of council, participated in an announcement of federal funding to enhance recreational facilities in the city. Particularly, an announcement touched on the Chinkoozie Park Tennis Center, as well as Century Gardens Recreation Center. The funding was provided by the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario, and the overall funding envelope would benefit six projects in the city. This is another example of a city effectively pursuing grant funding and working with other levels of government to improve community services in the city. And speaking of legislature raising for the summer, the House of Commons has also started their summer break and will resume on September 16th. Next slide, please. Our final slide today provides an update on a recent meeting of the Ontario Big City Mayors that Mayor Brown has participated in. During the meeting, mayors have discussed issues such as homelessness, mental health, and addictions, including passing several motions that enable mayors to work together and support work by cities, AMo, and other municipal players in terms of engagement with both province and federal government. One of the motions was of particular interest, which is a motion calling on a province to continue its funding of digital Main Street program to assist small businesses across the province. The city has been actively advocating with the province about this program and continues to work and engage with the province, making the case for program and its positive impacts in the city. And that concludes today's presentation.
Okay, we have two items related to government relations that are on the agenda, and the first is 8.2 from Counselor. Do we need to receive the move by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Singh? All those in favor received the government relations report? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we have 8.2, and thank you, Counselor Visante, for bringing this to the agenda. We have a new mayor in Mississauga who really wants to put a focus on the underfunding of social services, both provincially and federally. And I believe we should champion her pitch to the province. This is something we've talked about for years. And I think when there's more voices working together collectively, we'll have a better chance of success for that advocacy. And so, Counselor Visante, do you want to speak to the motion that you have put on the agenda?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I also want to just give a shout out to Counselor Mahoney, who was the acting mayor in Mississauga only up until about a week ago. This motion was passed at Mississauga Council, and as such, I actually would like the clerk to make a small correction to the motion where it says that the acting mayor, just that it should say that the mayor shall. And I want councilors here to also know that the Metamorphosis Report last week was brought to the attention of AMo. I gave a hard copy of that document to AMo leadership, and we are working to schedule a meeting with AMo so that they understand that this funding inequality that exists and affects Peel so tremendously, it's not just an issue in Peel, it's really an issue that is across the entire province. And we're looking for AMo to support our position and to work with us to advocate to the provincial government to find a better way of distributing funds and funding our social service groups to the level that they need so that they can serve our communities. So seeking the mayor's support and council's support to advance this motion forward, and also, if there is a way through the mayor's advocacy, if that report could make it into the hands of the premier's office and the MPPs. Thank you.
Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and support this motion. Have one friendly amendment to make to it, and that is to make sure that this also gets sent to our local MPs as well as to FCM. So some of the work that we've been doing at FCM is actually encouraging provincial governments to utilize the federal funding that they give to the province and actually disperse that funding accordingly. And unfortunately, even when the federal government disperses funds to the province, the consistency of how the provinces actually allocate that funding to different municipalities is very inconsistent. And we've seen some issues, particularly in Ontario, and obviously now with the facts before us in the Metamorphosis Report, that there is ongoing chronic underfunding and inequities when it comes to the region of Peel. We have experienced this firsthand in wards 1 and 5 in dealing with encampments and the issues related to homelessness, particularly in our wards and the lack of social supports for people who are now living in encampment situations. And unfortunately, the city of Brampton is picking up the tab, whether that's picking up the tab for the cleanups, for increased security, for the damage to the fires and the forests in the area, and safety issues, et cetera. So I just want a friendly amendment that we keep FCM on the loop on this, as well as the local MPs, and also have the Metamorphosis Report sent over to them as well. I think it's important for our advocacy efforts at all orders of government.
Okay, we have the motion on the floor, moved by Counselor Visante, seconded by myself. All those in favor? Give some hands. Motion carries. MPs, I think that's clear. Local MPPs and MPs. Clerk, I think the clerk heard that at the time, so I don't think we need to revote on that. Okay. Next item. Consideration for Establishing the Municipal Services Corporation to Support Regional Transition of Services in Key Strategic Investments. Maybe some opportunities coming our way, and so staff would like to undertake some work that would enable this for establishing a municipal services corporation in light of the new circumstances of the transition of region appeal services, and report back with a comprehensive plan for this to council. What would the timeline for that report back be? Maybe our Commissioner Corporate Services can answer that?
To you, Mayor. We would take that back and go through the public consultation process, but we figure it would be about two months or so.
Two months, okay. Okay, so we have the motion on the floor, seconded by the deputy mayor. All those in favor?
Sorry, to you, Mayor, just in the circumstances of the rendering of previous council decisions, I would just like to check with the clerk to see if we require a two-thirds vote on that.
No, it has not been discussed this term in council. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously nonetheless. Okay, this takes us to our next item, which is 10.4.3, Verbal Report from Commissioner Planning, Building, and Growth Management in Regards to Royal Link Circle. Commissioner Ganesh.
Through you, Mayor Brown, and to members of council. You'll recall at last week's committee meeting, there was a delegation of residents from Royal Link Circle that spoke to perhaps, I guess, their displeasure with the fence abutting the rare lot lines and adjacent to already constructed commercial plaza. Just by way of background, the amendment to the zoning bylaw for the commercial plaza that's already existing was filed with the city in 2019. A statutory public meeting was held in 2020, and a recommendation report for the commercial plaza was brought forth to council in August of 2022. In parallel to the recommendation report for the rezoning, a site plan was also filed by the applicant, and staff worked expeditiously to deem that site plan substantially complete. Despite all of that, in response to a lot of the feedback that residents provided staff with their concerns about privacy and loitering between the fence and their rare lot lines of the commercial plaza, staff undertook significant efforts to implement improvements, and the following measures were implemented. So a 2.2-meter-tall stacked dry masonry wall with decorative finish, which is, you know, above and beyond what we would typically work with an applicant to do in this sort of instance. An additional 2.4-meter-tall wood and metal privacy screen, again, to provide privacy and discourage that loitering. Enhanced landscape plan of 190 new trees along the rear of the commercial plaza and the rear lot line of the residence, and then the elimination of any concrete pads or sidewalks between each building to discourage unwanted pedestrian traffic. A letter was sent out to all of the residents, in addition to staff going out and meeting with some of them and the owner, and showed some depictions of what the new rendering of the wall would look like. A briefing note was circulated to members of council that showed that rendering. At this point in time, staff in our position now to proceed with site plan approval and execute the site plan agreements. So that's really my verbal update on the matter, and certainly would take any direction from council if there is any.
Okay. Counselor Tor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve, for that update. I know your staff has been working on this for a very long time. We've been going back and forth with the residents on this, and then going there on the site as well. The residents had a town hall meeting about this, and I understand where the residents are coming from, with the new build right in their backyards and construction been going on for so long. And I know staff have been making their best effort to find a solution, but understanding that the site plan is in place and the plan is the plan and the fence, the way they've built it, the developer's not agreeable to making changes to that. So just if I could propose a motion here between myself and Deputy Mayor Singh, that if we can go back and revise that site plan after having a discussion with the developer to change the fence to what we had discussed in that town hall meeting, to have it as a higher fence, a concrete fence that would completely separate this development from the existing residential neighborhood, I think that's what our residents are asking of us to do. So I'd like to put that motion on the floor for council's consideration.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Singh.
I just want to ask a couple of questions as well. Thank you for putting that motion on. More than happy to second it. The first question is, when we came up with the new plan, how many residents responded? Do you know that offhand? And how many were opposed to it? And were there any in support of it?
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Deputy Mayor Singh. I don't have those. But I believe Angel and Rico in the audience would probably have that information.
Do you get any people opposed, like emailing you or calling you?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. So we sent mail out, was it last week? We haven't received any email correspondence back yet, but the intent of the letter was to solicit feedback, but no responses yet.
And just from a cost standpoint, how much would a concrete barrier cost?
We don't have the exact numbers at this time, but it would be.
You can give a range.
Yeah, it would be based on the cost estimate, which the developer would have to provide back to the city. So we could request an updated cost estimate for that.
If I could, just in addition to the cost, certainly if that's the direction of council, staff would also want to ascertain if this new plan would trigger any changes to the already-approved zoning bylaw, which could certainly perhaps trigger perhaps minor variances that may or may not be required by the owner to undertake.
Do we have a range? Would we be looking in the hundreds of thousands, millions?
Based on what we, the information we know, the prefabricated fence cannot be altered structurally. So the assumption is that that fence would need to be removed and reconstructed, which could add significant cost to the development.
All right, cool. I think we just, some of our residents have approached us, so we're gonna see what my colleagues think, but we'll put the motion on. I know it was a tricky situation, and I do thank you for putting effort out, but the residents, you know, they're concerned about their home value tanking and everything. So if we can maybe try to help them out, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is on the floor from Counselor Tor and Singh. All those in favor? The motion does not carry. And I realize that would have set a precedent in the city, so obviously a difficult issue. So a motion to receive the report moved by Counselor Tor and Deputy Mayor Singh. Okay, this takes us to the next item, which was the staff report for Advanced Brampton Fund, and I believe that Counselor Keenan may have had a question or a reason to hold this.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. You know, it was just more to thank staff. It was great to work with staff to find the funding that is needed by this amazing organization. You know, watching how they're continuing, after 150 years, continue to push this sport in our city and continuing to grow it, and I'm just very happy to support it.
Counselor Keenan, this is the Advanced Brampton Fund one. Okay, Counselor Keenan, this is the Advanced Brampton Fund one. Does anyone else have questions about the Advanced Brampton Fund? It's a great program that supports so many. So maybe Counselor Keenan's question was on the next item. Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Tor. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to the Excelsior's funding, and this is the one that I believe there's a motion prepared. And this is the one that Counselor Keenan wanted to speak to in, sorry?
Through the mayor, it might be just the recommendations in the report.
Okay, just the recommendations in the report. And this achieves the shortfall, and so moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Maderos, Memorial Arena, where is the heartbeat of the lacrosse community is in wards 3 and 4, so I think it's appropriate to have moved by the local councillors. And now Counselor Keenan, if you want to speak to this item, this is the item I believe you wanted to speak to.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Brown. Yeah, sorry, my phone's cutting out. So I just wanted to say it was great to work with staff on this. Thank you for working so quickly, because we know that lacrosse is definitely still growing after 150 years, and it's great to be able to give them the support that they need in order to keep that growth going. I do know that your son Theo plays, which is awesome to watch him, and just seeing that the youth of today are still just as involved as they were 150 years ago. Very happy to support this and move the report. Thank you.
Counselor Maderos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and pretty much did on everything Counselor Keenan said. And, you know, I'm probably a prime example. When I first got elected, I didn't really follow lacrosse or understand. I knew the Excelsior brand, and now I can say that, you know, having seen some matches, really appreciate what they bring to the community. I appreciate the sport. But more so, everyone involved, they really put in so much valuable time, and they really put Brampton on the map. So thank you to staff and everyone involved in this. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Tor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanna, maybe it's a question to staff, actually. I saw in the previous agreement they had an obligation to report their financials. Is that going to be part of this as well, like with this grant being given to them this year? That they're going to have to report back to us at the year end?
Through the mayor, we will work on an agreement, which will depict how they spend their funds and verify that the 40,000 was used appropriately and for the invoices, and then we'll direct them in 2025 for Advanced Brampton funding.
So that'll be part of this?
That'll be part of the agreement that will be signed in recommendation number 3.
Okay, thank you. I thank you, Counselor Tor, Maderos, and Keenan, and just to say, there is definitely pride in lacrosse in Brampton, and I'm amazed by how many people share with me stories about lacrosse in Brampton. Even when we had Sheldon Keefe being awarded the Sports Hall of Fame recognition. Even when we had Sheldon Keefe being awarded the Sports Hall of Fame recognition, he started talking about how his boys love lacrosse at Brampton, or John Tavares, when he was at Hockey Night in Brampton, talking about his uncle, who was a legend in lacrosse, story after story about extraordinary success in the sport that comes out of Brampton. So glad to see us continue to support this. And shout out to Ron Evans, who has really been an unrelenting, determined, dogged supporter of the sport. And every sport needs champions like that who just don't give up on making sure that we continue to grow the sport. Love the youth programming, and I've, you know, I've seen it just through my own son. It is, we challenged lacrosse. If you're gonna use Memorial Arena, we're gonna take away ice time, that was a fully used ice rink. We've allocated that space elsewhere, that ice time, it's gotta be busy, and it is busy. Youth programming every single day, all ages, girls and boys falling in love with the sport. So very proud what they're doing there. The motion is on the table. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, this takes us to 12.3 is held by our Deputy Mayor, Harkiri Singh.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate all the work staff has been doing on driveways. Thank you to staff. So I noticed in this meeting, we focused on wards one, three, four, five, seven, and eight, and so I'd like to move that we make it citywide, and move that we look at driveway citywide, particularly incorporating estate and multi-generational homes. And I don't think I need to give direction to meet, I think I said it verbally at that meeting, that we meet with the ward pairings. So we'll meet with the ward pairings and work on that, and then we can bring that back at the report and everybody can look at it. But I think my goal is, I've been talking to Counselor Keenan about this as well, there's more mature neighborhoods that need more resources and they need more attention paid to them, and the mayor has been keen and Counselor Santos and everybody in the downtown core. Whereas in wards nine and 10 in particular, and to be clear, talking to Counselor Tor, we're not looking to take out wards nine and 10 per se. There's areas where we have estate homes that are two acre lots, multiple intergenerational, generational living within the homes, so the context is quite different. So we'd like to incorporate that, have this report go citywide, and incorporating intergenerational homes and estate homes. And we can work with the ward pairings, everybody can guide sort of the areas that they would like to incorporate, and then we can come up with a holistic approach. I think Commissioner has something to say.
Commissioner Ganesh.
If I could, through you, Mayor Brown, through the Deputy Mayor Singh, certainly staff will take that as direction, but perhaps a friendly amendment that perhaps part of staff's report back would be to work with strategic communications to ensure that there's a communication effort being made to residents and contractors when it comes to driveway widening, because in our work to date, that seems to be one of the gaps. So if we can come up with easy to understand sort of the do's and don'ts of driveway widening, we could certainly take that as part of our report back.
I think that's a fantastic idea. I think once we come with the full comprehensive plan, communication, definitely I've noticed that gap, especially for new subdivisions. That's the biggest gap. Just, there's one area we have, there's probably, you know, 1,500 homes, and it was never, it's not like the homeowner conveyed to them or nothing, and it's just gonna be a disaster there if we start, so basically just making it citywide and looking particularly for intergenerational and estate lots. And I think through the meetings with the individual wards, we'll come up with a solution that works for everybody.
Okay, Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, support what Deputy Mayor Singh is bringing forward. Last night, I was visiting a neighborhood, going door to door just to check in on an area, and the neighbors who were fully aware of somebody trying to expand their driveway or modify their driveway, but I don't think the homeowner was. So I think in the communication efforts, I think it is important to communicate to all residents, because sometimes it's the neighbors who can flag for that person who's about to change the driveway, what the rules are, especially if they don't know. But I certainly support this. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Moved by Deputy Mayor Singh, seconded by Counselor Santos.
Sorry, just...
So just some clarification as to exactly what are the resolutions changing?
Basically, we're moving it to all wards. Right now, it's only wards... It was only supposed to be from the chair neighbor. Yeah. Looking at it, you could just write citywide.
So it was simply receiving that presentation of that.
Yeah.
So...
But what about, I guess, expanding this and what we're trying to do?
So I had a number three to this, I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, go ahead. The expanded citywide with particular, with incorporating multi-generational and estate homes.
Yeah, and so just to summarize what the Deputy Mayor is hoping to achieve, is that in an area in the east end where there's larger estate lots with multi-generational living, there would be discretion for a larger driveway, given the multi-generational nature of the home, or in an area that is more mature, like Peel Village with smaller lots, where we're trying to not have overrun basement apartments, that it would be a smaller driveway. And so I think this is a balancing solution for the different natures of neighborhoods in the city, and I'm sure our planning commissioner, Steve Ganesh, can bring back a report that achieves both goals.
Through you, Mayor Brown, through the Deputy Mayor, if I could suggest that perhaps the wording could be that the program be expanded citywide to, expanded to include property citywide and incorporate design efforts that respect the existing context of neighborhoods, open bracket, such as multi-generational homes, because multi-generational dwellings would exist throughout the city, not just the specific wards.
Yeah, we'll work to define it when we work with the ward pairing. We decided multi-generational and estate, and estate homes.
And just to be clear, to Counselor Keenan and Maderos's relief, this will not apply for the mature neighborhoods that they're concerned about the growth of secondary suites that are unable to support the parking needs of those suites.
Yep. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Motion carries. It was moved by Deputy Mayor Singh and Counselor Santos. Okay, our next item, I believe, goes all the way to 13.2. This is Counselor Keenan. We have the boundary modification, the potential review of the downtown business improvement area. Counselor Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe Counselor Vasante is gonna speak to it and bring forward the motion, just as he's in recent chambers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of council. We have been discussing this off and on for the past couple of weeks, months, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to display Appendix A, which accompanies a motion, which we'll display shortly. If I could ask the clerk to do that for us. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So realizing that the downtown Brampton BIA is a creature of the city, if you will, and it's been about 35 years since the last time that the BIA boundary was defined. And in the meantime, the downtown Brampton has grown, and the business community has actually grown outside of the current boundary. We are fortunate, however, because we have recently approved MTSA maps, which guide our planning process going forward, including an MTSA for the downtown Brampton area. And so recognizing, of course, that this area is going to experience growth over the next couple of decades, and we, of course, always push for inclusion of commercial spaces in all of the developments that are presented to us. And so this is an opportunity for the BIA to grow in the future, and also recognizing that the city of Brampton, over the years, has also owned property in the downtown while we tried to achieve some of our strategic objectives, and that has been, you might say, a negative on the finances of the BIA. And so with this new guideline, which is the MTSA map with an extension to the east and to the west along the Queen Street corridor, both myself and Counselor Keenan, in consultation with staff and the BIA, we have developed this new proposed BIA boundary map, and we're asking for council support to approve this as the new BIA area going forward. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, because I know that there are some businesses along that sliver that's cut out, just north of Queen, along McMurtry, as well as a plaza on the west side of McMurtry that's gonna be left out. Was there consideration to those plazas? I know that there's also a hair salon and another plaza that's on that east side of McMurtry that's been cut out. How can those businesses, if they wanted to be part of the downtown BIA, be part of it? Because there's a, like the, there's magnums, it looks like, is left out, as well as occasions, as well as the Taekwondo place, as well as the hair salon and other places as well?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Right now, the boundaries are, that are being brought forward by our counselors, who are part of the BIA board, are looking at the MTSA to give it that, to give it that clean, synchronized boundary that aligns with our future development objectives for the downtown. Now, that's not to say that these other properties couldn't be added if that was something we wanted to look at, or if that's something that they want to be part of.
So, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna add it because I'm looking at the map, and I can't understand how that tiny little sliver wouldn't be part of the MTSA. It's just like cut out. It looks like it's being excluded for some reason, and I don't want those businesses to feel they're being excluded. And then if we could add the plaza just on that east, or west side of McMurtry that has the magnums and the occasions, I know that they've always wanted to benefit perhaps from being part of the BIA, or actually have just the opportunity to participate. I think they would appreciate that too. So if there's a way to include those businesses and get rid of that tiny sliver that looks really weird on the map for some reason, I'd like to make that amendment if I can.
Sure. Okay, so we have the motion on the floor with the amendment moved by Counselor Keenan and Santos, and seconded by Santos and Vasante?
Yes.
All three of you spoke. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, this takes us to item 16.2, which is the added motion from Counselor Santos.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So this is about the political model and the members of council budgets as it relates to staff. The intention of the political model was to give members of council the flexibility to use our budget and to hire staff accordingly. Unfortunately, I've learned through the past number of years that we are actually still restricted to three very specific positions, which does not allow us the flexibility per se that we need to deal with emerging issues or issues related to, for example, I know the mayor will speak to it as well, is, you know, hiring someone to help us out specifically just for events on the weekend. Or in my case, something very urgent happened where I had to deal and respond to issues related to encampments, and I needed to have support staff on my team to deal with those specific issues, but I couldn't because of the restrictions of what I was allowed to hire, based on the political model previously decided in the last term of council. So this motion actually helps us achieve what I think some of those barriers are. Moved by myself, as well as Counselor Tor. I've spoken to corporate services team about this, as well as a number of my colleagues who have experienced similar challenges as well, and hope that my colleagues will also support this, because it'll just, it'll help us deal with a lot of emergent issues and some of the barriers to hiring in our offices.
Okay, and just to speak to that, why I think it's fair, I have that same discretion with my mayor's office, and the unique nature of the work you do, I think you need to have that discretion. So for example, sometimes I do 20 to 25 community events on a weekend, I'd say that's probably a common weekend. I think I have the only job where on Monday morning, you say, "Thank goodness, it's Monday morning." Not that I don't love all the engagement that happens in Brampton on the weekend, but hearing from counselors that they are unable to sort of tailor some of their needs, I don't think is fair. And so if there's going to be a community event that you're hosting on the weekend, having that part-time staff, the ability to, you know, have different employment models, to have evening and weekend work, I think is entirely appropriate. And, you know, I support this motion entirely to give you the discretion, this is not increasing your budget, this is simply giving you more flexibility to choose how you spend your budget, which is, for me, I was more surprised that you didn't already have that ability. And thank you, Counselor Santos, for flagging this. All those in favor of the motion? Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Tor. All those favorite? Motion carries. This takes us to public question period, right? Item 7, 16, public question period. Are there any questions from the public? Yes. Sylvia.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Roberts, resident of Brampton. This is actually regarding the referred matters list. One of the items, the Brampton Autism Center, has now been pushed back, the date has been revised 16 times, and the date has been pushed back 21 months. Is it possible to find out what has happened to this item? The Brampton Autism Center, which is a referred matters item from the Committee of Council, which has now been pushed back to December is the target, which is 21 dates after the original time, and has 16 revisions to the...
Yeah, so on this one, it would be requiring provincial funding, and so this is a model that was set up in Scarborough that was suggested by our chief of police, that we could maybe replicate it in Brampton, and I know we'd be eager to if that funding came through, but maybe having a staff report that clarifies what's required. Obviously, this is not a service that is funded municipally, but Commissioner Boyes?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Through the mayor, we're looking at the report in the fall, or an update to council in the fall.
Okay, and thank you, Sylvia, for flagging that. You know, I was, I spoke at the protest at Queens Park, autism doesn't end at five, and the critical need, you can change, you can take a non-verbal child and make them verbal if they get that therapy young. You miss that opportunity, and for far too many families, that support is not available. Not to even mention, after you turn 18, you fall off a cliff with no support. And so if there's ever an area that needs more investment and support, it's this, and maybe it's a reminder, when you speak to the advocacy we're doing with Mayor Parrish and Mayor Groves, this is one of the issues that continues to be put on the back burner. But we'd love it if we could get support and funding to have this center in Brampton, so thank you for the reminder.
Thank you.
Okay, this takes us to bylaws. Okay, this takes us to bylaws. We're now at the portion of the meeting dealing with the adoption of city bylaws to give effect to council decisions made at this meeting. I have a motion moved by Counselor Power and seconded by Counselor Vasante to approve the bylaws. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to our closed session items. What I'm going to suggest is to give staff time to set up. Why don't we take our lunch break now? It is eleven forty-five, and we come back at twelve thirty in closed session. So I have a, on the sixth floor, okay? There's renovations.
There are renovations.
Okay, so council members, it will be on the sixth floor of the in-camera meeting. I have a motion moved by Counselor Santos and seconded by Counselor Power to move into closed session to deal with the following items. And the items are nineteen point four and nineteen point five, I believe. Okay. And in the interest, in the interest stream of public transparency, any items and actions taken in closed session will be reported out in public session, including in passing a confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. So we are on break until twelve thirty. And for members of council. We do have the Deputy Mayor here now. So we are able to start now that he is here. Thank you, Counselor Tor, for arranging that. In the continuing interest in transparency and open government, I report in public session any outcomes from today's closed session business. As a result of closed session today, on nineteen four, nineteen five, consideration information was received and no direction was given on either matter. We have one vote on open part. Moved by Deputy Mayor Singh, seconded by Counselor Vasante. The city clerk be delegated to authority to execute amendment to the current agreement of Brampton and the city's integrity commission on terms and conditions, and in form acceptable to the city's solicitor or designate. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to a confirming bylaw. Moved by Counselor Vasante, seconded by Counselor Tor. The following bylaw, before council at its regular meeting, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, be given the required number of readings, taken as read and signed by the mayor, the city clerk, and the corporate seal ethics thereto. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to adjournment. Our next meeting will be on July tenth at nine thirty a.m. And, yes. And before I adjourn, I know Counselor Tor, you were really hoping for the Edmonton Oilers. You had your jersey. And there's always next year for a Canadian team, but I appreciate the fact that you were supporting your wife and her ancestry in Edmonton. And I think the whole country joined in to cheer them along. Moved by Counselor Tor, seconded by Deputy Mayor Singh to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Motion adjourned.